All right, I will call and see. My mic is on, you can hear me. I will call the regular town council meeting of January tenth, September tenth, twenty twenty five to order and ask for a roll up.
Councilor Scrambley.
Here.
Krover.
Yeah.
Montague is not present. Skyler will be best present, just step out. Scolgo.
Yeah.
Mayor Carton Lincoln.
Yeah.
And Mayor Clark.
Here. Thank you. That brings us to additions or deletions to agenda, are there any?
Yes, Mayor, I have several. We could remove item number nineteen, that's the permanent non-exclusive agreement between Wolfland Company LP and the Town Ridgeway.
Okay.
Negotiations are ongoing and the document is not yet ready. Second thing, on number twenty, in addition to ratifying the decision of stage two fire restrictions and the reinstatement of stage one fire restrictions, we'd like to ask you all to consider rescinding all fire restrictions effective twelve oh one AM on this Friday. It is put this Friday, which would be in line with Westbury County. Mayberry County is the Forest Service and the VLM are all doing it. And then the third one is the strategic plan progress report is very close to being ready, you're not fully ready yet. So I'll need to cover that.
Okay, what was that last one?
The progress report with the strategic plan.
Okay. All right, thank you. Pam, you didn't have anything?
I do not, thanks.
That takes us to the option consent calendar. Is there any demand to pull off or is there a motion to approve?
I just had a quick question.
Yes.
What is the liquor library?
The liquor store next to the Conoco.
It used to.
It moved over into the old.
Yes, cool, I just.
You take me five years liquor.
Yeah.
Yeah, these rebrandings.
Cool. No, it's a very cool space, I just didn't know which one it was.
Yeah, it's high spirits. See this season.
No, I moved to adopt the consent calendar. Second.
All right, most men seconded, all favors.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is unanimously, thank you. That takes us to public comments, this is time established on the agenda to address council on any item that is not otherwise not the agenda. So do you have anything? Do you want to add? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on to the public requests and presentations, item number five, presentation of the twenty twenty four fiscal year autumn. Pete, welcome. You're on, Pete. Can you hear us? So if you can't hear us.
Pete, can you hear us?
Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. You're at the floor is yours.
Is there any way I can bring up some letters or folders? Yeah, I guess I could share now.
Yeah, you should be able to share, Pete.
We're ready where you are, Pete.
And Pete, we can see your screen.
Pete, can you hear us?
I think you can. Hey Pete, can you hear us?
I can barely hear you.
Can you turn up the volume on your computer? Or are others on Zoom having a hard time hearing us? Give us a thumbs up on Zoom if you're having a hard time hearing us or give us a thumbs up if you could hear us, they should say.
We're not having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I think it's a volume issue on your computer, Pete.
Pete, I don't know if you could hear that, but if you can try to adjust the volume on your computer.
You're gonna call up there?
Sorry, I can't really hear you, can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine, why don't you go ahead with your presentation? You can't hear us, can you?
No, I forgot, I don't, I don't know, I was gonna answer.
Can you turn up the volume on your computer?
Done, I don't know what's going on.
Just connect and reconnect.
You wanna sign up and sign back in maybe? You know, Pete, we can hear you pretty good, so why don't you go ahead and just give your presentation and we'll see if we can figure out something on our end. Can you hear that? Pete, if you can hear us, go ahead and present.
Sorry, folks.
There he is, Terry. There he is, not answering. So Terry didn't miss anything. Not even giving us anything.
I've got the vinyl, as I can go, I can't hear you.
Okay, go ahead and present if you want it.
Can, Preston, do you?
Hey Pete, can you hear us? What's that?
Do you have the chat function?
You know, I think it's, I think it's on my side and I don't know why it's not working.
I apologize. Wait, let me try.
Go ahead and make your presentation if you can hear me.
Okay, I'm just gonna go over the management report real quick. And if you can hear me, that's great. I can barely hear you, but. And I'm gonna just start with. I was hoping to be able to pull this report in, but for some reason. It's not letting me do it. Management report?
We can see that graph. You don't have the chat.
Well, I'll basically just go to the management report and I won't. Evidently, nothing's working right now. Can you see this management report though?
Yes.
Yes.
Just gonna go over the highlight.
Close your settings.
You look at the first. Columns there, the general fund, the general fund actually went up about eight hundred thousand compared to two thousand and twenty-three. If you look at the water fund. It actually went down a little bit by about forty-eight thousand. And if you look at the sewer fund, it went up about hundred and eighty-one thousand. If you look at the next. Graph here, this is what you budgeted as far as. Revenues for the general fund, and if you look at, you budgeted about three point four million in revenues, you actually took in about four point three million. If you look at the water fund. It was pretty close to what you budgeted. And then if you look at the sewer fund. You took in about thirty thousand more than what you budgeted. If you go down where it's highlighted. The general fund mainly took in a lot more revenue because of sales tax, lodging tax and interest income. I think sales tax was up about four hundred and forty thousand. Lodging taxes up about forty-two thousand and interest was up about two hundred and twenty thousand. If you look at the water fund, interest revenue was more than budgeted by about six fifty-nine thousand. And then you were down a little bit as far as charges for services and temp fees. And then if you look at the sewer fund. Interest revenue was up about fifty-five thousand. And again, you were a little bit down on charges for services and temp fees. If you look at the next graph on the. Exponential side. You had budgeted a lot more expenditure than you actually had in the general fund. The big difference was in general government, public safety and public works and parks. It was a lot less than what you budget as far as expenses. And if you look at the water fund, same thing, you budgeted more than what you expended. And again, it was in consulting and engineering. And it was in also repairs and maintenance. And then we did have this one thing that's been on there, we need to get with Pam to probably come up with a depreciation schedule for you. That she will maintain as far as her financial records. Now let me see if I can actually go. Over the next one.
Hey Pete, can you hear me?
It's high as hell.
Pete, we can't see anything but your settings, well wait a minute, there you go, bring that up.
And everything he's going over, you have in your pocket, the brass funding.
Yeah, they are, they're the first part of the management.
Well, it's probably the part of the.
The paragraph.
Okay, I'm gonna go over the audit real quick, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, on the audit. If you go to the first page with the actual opinion letter, it was a clean opinion. Basically saying that everything was fairly stated. And then I'm gonna skip a little bit and actually go to the MDNA. And that's on page three, and you're gonna see some bullets there. And basically, this is the financial highlights of the audit. And you're gonna see that first bullet there that says. That the assets exceed the liabilities by about twenty-one million. This is on a full accrual basis, this is taking in all the assets as far as. Capital assets, cash, everything is on that governmental life statement. If you look to the second bullet. It talks about governmental funds. And governmental funds actually ended up would be about five million. And that's an increase of about seven hundred and sixty thousand. And then if you look at the third bullet. The fund balance in the general fund actually increased by about seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand. The town does not really have a lot of debt. And that debt actually decreased by about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for two thousand and twenty-four. Mainly, most of the money that comes into the town is through sales tax, property tax, and that is about two point eight million. Which is about seventy-seven percent of the general revenues. And then I'm gonna skip a little bit and go to this one table. And this table is actually gonna give you a comparison, and I think it's on page five. It's gonna give you a comparison of all the governmental activities and business type activities, and then there's gonna be a column to your right. That actually gives you the totals. And you're gonna notice that if you look at total assets, which is the third line down that table. Our total assets increased about one million, mainly was all in cash. If you go down to where it's highlighted unrestricted, this is the amount that you'll carry forward for your budget. And you have about just less than nine million of unrestricted funds. So it's all positive, everything went up. If you go to. The next graph, it actually gives you a comparison. Or sorry, the next table, it actually gives you a comparison. Of the revenues. Compared to two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-three. The big difference. Was we took in a lot of grant revenue in two thousand and twenty-three, we did not take as much in two thousand and twenty-four. And that was the difference as far as revenues, but if you look at expenses. Expenses in two thousand and twenty-three on a total accrual base was just over about five point one million. In two thousand and twenty-four, it actually went down to about four point six. So if you look at that third line from the bottom on that table. It looks like we have a net increase in position of about just less than one point one million. So as I said, everything is positive as far as the town. I'm gonna skip a little bit. And go to a couple of footnotes. Going down as fast as I can. If you go to page eighteen. This is the water in the sewer fund. And if you go down to the third line from the bottom, the change in net position. The water fund increased by about a hundred and seventy-one thousand. And deposition, the sewer fund increased by about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. For a total increase of about three hundred and ten thousand. And then if you go on a cash flow basis, which is the next page on page nineteen. You're gonna see a net increase in cash. For all the enterprise funds about just less than a hundred, just more than a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. So all the funds actually increased. Over the year, you have that one fund fiduciary fund, which is on page twenty. This is the general improvement fund. And at the end of the year, it had about thirty-one thousand. Okay, I'm. Page twenty-eight, note five. At the end of two thousand and twenty-four, the town had just less than nine million dollars in cash. And as I said, that actually went up about a million dollars compared to two thousand and twenty-three. Most of the money is invested in C-Safe or Color Trust. Which you have about six point one million in that, that's triple A rated, it's kind of like a money marketer. Account, but it's all triple A rated, this is what most. Most governmental entities have their money right now is in those investment pools. And then you did have about two point eight million cash in bank. If you go to the next page, it lists all the debt. As I said, the town doesn't really have a lot of debt, the total debt right now is about one point two billion. Most towns have a lot more debt than that. Actually has a breakdown falling out of all the amortization schedule of that debt. I'll go real quick on page thirty-three, capital assets. We didn't really purchase a lot this year. And I think you end up purchasing about two hundred and forty thousand, but you had depreciation expense of about three hundred thousand. And again, we didn't have a lot, we had some construction in progress on the water sewer. And that added up to be about two hundred and sixty-one thousand. The rest of these are just budget information that you can get as you get ready to prepare for the two thousand and twenty-six budget. Any questions, I went over that real quick, but I can barely hear you.
Yeah, can you hear us at all?
Basically, I don't hear too much.
Um, well, I don't know if anybody has any questions, I think you've been very thorough, we thank you for your presentation. And anybody in the room have any questions, we could try and pass on them. I think we're good, thanks Pete.
Yeah, I think you guys did an excellent job. You stayed way within your budget. And you increased all the funds, which is kind of remarkable based off, everybody's just kind of. Holding flat right now, but you actually did a really good job and you did everything that you wanted to do for the year.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you guys, I'm sorry I can't hear you though.
Yeah, we'll work on that for next time. Thanks Pete. Take care. And as usual, I just want to say a big thank you to Pam Craft for all the hard work she's asked us behalf of the town finances. We are very lucky to be in the position we're in. Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item number six, proclamation declaring September, September twenty twenty-five is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Jamie is on Zoom, I imagine.
Jamie's not here with us, but I am representing Tri-County Heidi.
Hi Heidi, thanks for being here. And if you have anything you wanna say, go ahead.
We just really appreciate you participating in September being Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and. Your ongoing support, you've been great with us, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. As always happens this time of year. I just personally like to express my. My feelings about this issue as somebody who's struggled with mental health issues my entire life. I know the importance of suicide awareness, we need to break the pattern of. Stigma against mental illness, and the best way to do that is to talk about it, recognize it. And as someone who has considered suicide, quite honestly, I think it's really important that we. Recognize it this month as we do every year, and that we do everything we can to try and help our. Friends and family that might be struggling. And I always like to remind people, if you know someone who's struggling. You might be under the mistaken impression that it's not good to talk about it, that somehow that might trigger a suicide. The evidence is the exact opposite. If you ask somebody whether they're considering harming themselves, they're ninety-nine percent, I don't know what the actual percentage, but they are much more likely. To actually get help, talk to you about it, be appreciative of the fact that somebody's at least noticing that they're struggling. And it doesn't, it doesn't increase the chances that they will commit suicide, it actually decreases those chances, so. Notice the people in your lives that are struggling, reach out to them, it'll make a difference and. I'll look for a motion to approve this resolution.
I move to approve the proclamation declaring in September twenty twenty-five as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
All right, most made in seconded, all favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, of course not, thank you very much, thanks Heidi, thanks for being here.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, next up is the item number seven, request to hold a defend our democracy rally in Herbrooke Park. At Marshall on Highway sixty-two on September twenty-eighth, Al, you wanna come up and. Anything you wanna add about it?
Not much, except what's already in the application, we're entertaining the questions, anyone with a pass.
Great, thanks. We have courses for all of us.
It just looked like it was mid after one o'clock.
Yeah.
And the cops like worried about doing any additional, just. Traffic watch and they're gonna have people walking on that sidewalk. I mean, another guy's a sidewalk.
Well, that was on the application, is that they're paying for an additional marshal.
Oh, I see, sorry. Make a point to that. Shane, would you mind covering the top to the marshal's office perspective about that request for. Additional deputy, maybe once this wraps up, Shane, can you talk to that?
Yeah, I got notified that that probably won't be able to happen, so. Assuming there's approval for the rally, we'll probably contact the sheriff's office, let's see if they can do something.
Okay, anybody in the audience have any comments or questions?
I move to approve the application for the defend our democracy rally.
Second.
Motion made in second, made all favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go, thank you. It's, Shane, you wanna add anything?
Just that. With the previous rallies, we had some concern over blockage of the highway. And that needs to not happen unless it's permitted. And so that would be my only concern and people's safety, walking on the sidewalk, we need to stay on the sidewalk. So if the group's large enough, we'll need to kind of slim down. That, and the only other thing is I don't have anybody. That's available that day other than the two officers that'll be on at that time. In order to cover it.
Okay.
Those are my only things we need to talk about.
Okay, thank you, Shane, that was good. Mike Preston? Ask him to touch the mic, yeah. What is the date?
Yes.
Twenty-eight, twenty-two.
Yeah, there's no date in it.
Thank you.
It was, yeah, it was just coming out.
I just have a question. We will use the crosswalk up at Riggs and the crosswalk down at the town park. If you guys have any stop signs, we'll have some volunteers that would be willing to stand out and stop the traffic while people are going across. They will also use their judgment so that if traffic starts backing up, we'll just stop. Crossing, let the traffic go through and then resume. But it would be helpful if you had a little handheld stop sign.
I think the school district has some stop signs for their crossing guards, we can try and figure out, just got those, get those for you.
Okay, excellent.
Still the flags, if there are. Yeah, there's, there's orange flags at the, by the Ridgeway Outdoor Venture Sports Crosswalk there, there's orange flags on each side. Okay, so, between those two.
And then one at Bay Riggs has at least the flashing lights, if you had, you know, neon vests with flashing lights, that would get you quite a face along the way.
All right. That takes us to public hearings, we have one tonight, item number eight. Extension request to meet conditions of approval of the Preserve PUD preliminary plat. Location subdivision part of L B A and Woodford Edition, address TBD, Canberra twenty-three. Restmental zone owner governing group. Welcome, Angie.
Thank you. That's loud. The applicant's also here, in case there's any questions after my presentation. Okay. You can go to the next slide, Preston, if you don't mind. So, public, you can go to the next slide. The preliminary plat approval was granted under the prior Ridgway Municipal Code, which allows the. uh, which allows the town council to extend the approval. And the approval has a long history, as you can tell. Uh, it was granted conditional approval in two thousand and six, extended in two thousand and seven for one year, and then put on hold due to, um, the economic recession. And then in twenty eighteen, those owners brought the long expired preliminary plat to town council. Um, and it was conditionally approved once again. It kept most of the former conditions of approval intact. And then two-year extensions were granted in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, and again last year in twenty twenty-four with a final extension to expire on September of twenty twenty-six, so next year. But the applicant has received a construction timeline, um, for infrastructure so that they can meet all of their conditions. And the work extends into the twenty twenty-seven building season. So therefore, the applicant submitted the extension request to protect their investment, um, and move forward with the infrastructure construction. Um, next slide. So I just have a couple of key points on this. Um, the project is required to meet town's current infrastructure standards and specifications. Um, the project's not required to comply with the standards of the Uncompagri River Overlay District because it was granted, um, conditional approval before those standards were in place. And then the recent annexation, um, the Dalwinnie addition was required as part of the conditional approval to accommodate a sanitary sewer lift station that will serve the development. Um, and I'm going to show you that on the preliminary plat, if you don't mind scrolling down. So that's just page one of the plat. Here's page two. Um, it shows where that Dalwinnie addition area is. Um, if you have any questions on like what all is here, I have some notes on that, uh, but Chris will be able to answer any questions. And then keep going. Thank you. Uh, you can just stop, I guess, on the on the flat page. Um. So, yeah, you have a few options here, basically. So if good causes has been, um, shown, like they're working toward their condition compliance, uh, it allows council to grant additional time to meet these conditions. And they're requesting a two-year extension. Um, you can choose to approve or deny the extension request or allow for more or less time than requested. Um, or you can require some additional information from the applicant, in which case a continuance to a date certain would be appropriate. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Angie.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Next sentence to me is pretty extensive.
Chris, you want to have anything? Come on up.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Let me breathe. Um, good evening, Chris Hawkins with Alpine Planning, representing Dalwinnie. Um, the request to extend this plat is based on the construction schedule. Obviously, two seasons are needed to get it done. There's quite a bit of work out there. Construction will commence in the spring of twenty-six and finish up in summer, fall of twenty-seven. Reason we're asking all the way to January first of twenty-eight is to allow a little bit of a fudge factor, but also too to be able to submit the final plat application and get that approved before the next expiration, because I really don't want to come in front of you again and ask for another extension.
Um, so there work continues. Uh, the civil plans are continually being revised to address, uh, engineering comments,
work through the lift station details. Um, the as there's also been testing of the infrastructure that's out there, just to know, is it still good? Water lines, sewer lines, all that stuff. Um, and pricing's been done. Skip Houston's been great helping us out. And then the extension timeline is really based on our understanding about the rough time periods it's going to take for town review to to get the plans issued, our time to submit and get approval from the C D P H E for the lift station. Uh, we were curious about that and a response I got from an engineer, it's about four to six months to get that done. So that's our priority to get that application taken care of in front of engineering, get the town to sign it and get it submitted as soon as we can. Um, that's our number one priority. Uh, but in the end, we really appreciate the cooperation and help from the town over the last several years, getting things cleaned up and ready to go. And you know, I see the lots in town are running out slowly but surely, um, seems more quickly lately. And so hopefully it'll be about time once we get done for people to start building some new homes. So thank you for your time and help.
Thanks, Chris. Questions for Chris? Scott? In here. One, two, one. Yep. Okay, so I'll move to.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, um, so I have to open up lots of public comment. Everybody either here in the room or on Zoom to comment on this item. If you don't know how to unmute on Zoom, just, I mean, if you're out and raise your hand, you can just unmute. I don't see anyone. I don't see anyone here in the room, so I will close the public comment section, bring it back up here for you.
I continue to be concerned about the extensions that happen ongoing and ongoing, which is not personal to this project. It is just a concern that I have when town does something like pass the River Overlay District at some point, uh, residents who have moved to town in the interim believing there to be a River Overlay District. The extension process just isn't quite the same as the the first round, even though it is a formal public hearing. Um, and so while I have, I do understand all of the pieces of annexation that went into this, I just want to express my concerns when you see things dating back over a decade.
Almost twenty years.
Yeah, that that really, really privileges those who lived here a long time ago saying what's going forward from this point. Um, and I'm not going to vote against this. I just continue to be concerned about our extension process.
As mentioned, um, last time you came before us asking for an extension, you said it's the last time.
Yeah.
Um, I I will say I'm also not going to vote against this. However, if you come back again, I will.
I mean, it's in some way, we do have to enforce overlays that are on, like itself. Yeah.
It sounds like only two days summer construction period. I mean, I understand what the others are saying, too, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's a pretty, pretty unique situation. One I don't think I've had yet, but that does serve really big situation. So, um, appreciate your comments. Um. Anyone else? Comments here? Okay. Someone want to make a motion? I'll move to approve the extension request from the Preserve PUD preliminary plat conditional approval. Second, I think it's kind of, um, just kind of, um, okay, most of it may be second in all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you and your concerns.
Okay, that brings us to a number of policy matters. I have number nine, resolution number twenty-five, forty-eight, adopted Urae County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Glenn Lloyd, your incoming senator here. Problem, Glenn?
Hello, council. Hopefully it's the last time you see me after four plans. Um, this plan, um, I didn't do a presentation because everyone's had a chance to be a part of it, part of the planning, a year and a half worth of work. So I will just, uh, go through some highlights real quick, just for the audience and for you guys. Um, what is the hazard mitigation plan? It's a plan that lists is out mitigation, um, mitigation projects throughout our county, identifies areas that, um, need some risk reduction, and it will reduce those risks for residents and visitors. It builds up community resiliency and preparedness. This is a multi-jurisdictional collaboration. This plan contains the county, city of Urae, town of Ridgway, Dallas Park Cemetery, fire districts, all, uh, participate in the coordination of creating this plan. This is a plan that has to be adopted every five years per FEMA requirement. Um. This, uh, during the process of updating this plan, we had over two hundred and fifty residents and multiple stakeholders participating uh, through surveys, meetings, preview sessions, ensuring the plan reflects the local concerns and community-driven solutions. Let's see. So why adopt this plan? Why does the adoption, uh, matter? It's required by the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand to remain eligible for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grants Assistance. It unlocks, unlocks state funding and, when available, federal funding for wildfire mitigation, flood control, debris flow prep, protection and infrastructure resiliency projects. Strengthens public safety by reducing risks from avalanches, floods, wildfires, drought and severe winter storms and many other hazards. And then demonstrates proactive leadership and responsibility governments to taxpayers and partner agencies. So this plan has, uh, you guys are actually the last to adopt it. And so as soon as, hopefully it's adopted tonight, uh, we are good for the next five years. This plan's gone to, uh, the State Department of Homeland Security, been reviewed, scored and adopted by our, um, approved by the State of Department of Homeland Security. Then it went to FEMA and it's been approved and, um, recommended for adoption by FEMA. And it has been adopted by the county and adopted by the city of Urae. So we are here today for the final step.
All right, go ahead. We'll accept our questions and clips. Nice, but thanks, Glenn. Questions? Even like down rabbit hole reading it today and wait.
All four of your papers are supposed to do today?
There's some amazing statistics.
There are. There's a lot of, a lot of history in there and a lot of, uh, uh, like you said, statistics on why mitigation is so important in our community like ours.
It did dovetail with my homework reading I was doing last night when I saw like the dam failure possibility was very low. I was like, but I just found a simulation. But anyway, it was interesting. I did almost go down rabbit hole.
Any questions from anybody here in the room or on Zoom? Glenn? Democratic data is also. All right, that is their motion. I'll move to approve. Disclosed. Resolution, uh, resolution, Town Council, Town of Ridgway, Colorado, adopted two thousand and twenty-five Urae County Hazard. Motion made in second in all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That says you have a front row. That's not a word of that.
Thank you.
And I I neglected at the beginning of the meeting to mention this. Glenn told me, uh, just before we got started, uh, former marshal David Scott passed away a few days ago. September sixth. I just wanted to make note of that, maybe ask for just a moment of silence. Scotty was a great guy. He did love the town Ridgway. Heart of gold. Sorry to hear that he's passed on. We'll take a few seconds and just give him a moment of silence. Thank you. Rest in peace, Scotty. Okay, and next up is item number ten, release of subdivision improvements agreement between Alpine Homes Ridgway LLC and the town of Ridgway. This is the Riverfront Village PUD and subdivision. Preston?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, um, council entered into a subdivision improvement agreement, acronym is SIA, with the developer of the Riverfront Village PUD subdivision on January third, twenty twenty-four. Thanks, Glenn. Uh, the terms of the agreement have been formed then, so council, uh, councils now asked to consider releasing the SIA the associated, uh, irrevocable letter of credit for the Riverfront Village PUD subdivision. We are looking into the requirements that were set out by the CDOT access permits associated with the development and, uh, I've got some, uh, great responses from, uh, the development team um, that that those requirements are set to be met here very shortly. So I just thought I'd kind of mention that, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Preston. Any questions up here or Jake? So anything you want to add, Jake?
I'm standing with you, cousin, darling.
Guessing Jake doesn't have anything to add. Um, any questions up here?
What's the total time? Subdivision of the build, it's like eighteen months?
Would you ask that?
I think the initial pre-application meeting shakeover was here, ten event meeting that was in making it up, but I think like March of twenty twenty. You know, when, you know, with the visioning exercise, this is what we'd like to do.
Excavation started about two years. Yeah, we were still online. I remember technically down payment assistance and deed restricted payments.
Just thinking of those.
But when you think about it from start to, it's wild.
Big deal. It's looking good, too.
I move to release the subdivision improvement agreement between Alpine Homes Ridgway LLC and the town of Ridgway and the associated irrevocable letter of credit as the terms of the agreement have been met. Second.
All right, motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Assistant manager, thank you. Moving along to item number eleven, review and action on agreement for services between Urae County, City of Urae, Town of Ridgway and the Home Trust of Urae County concerning affordable housing services.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, a lot of background information in the, um, happy to cover more if you like, but, uh, last time we checked in on this topic, we got direction from you all and S F when maybe uh, Urae City Council and the the B O C C to proceed with the drafting of a service contract. Um, and then subsequent to that, Leo Casselli, the attorney for Urae County, drafted the agreement for services that's in the packet for you, and, uh, it lays out a clear scope of services, provisions for payment, cost sharing, term, all of it. Um, the version that is in the packet indicates that the Home Trust of Urae County has agreed to a start date of November first. Uh, but they've come back and indicated that they can be ready for an October one start date, which is what I don't know if that guy, but that's what I've been recommending and calling for for quite some time now. Um, because it sounds like the home trust is well on their way to hiring someone to to serve in that role. And true, which is great news. Uh, so an earlier start date would be prudent and appreciated from staff's perspective because rural homes is, uh, contract with Impact Development Services for administration of the deed restrictions for the weather horn homes neighborhood, just here, Ridgway, obviously, and then the water view homes neighborhood in Urae. That contract ends at the end of twenty twenty-five, so December thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. So this is very timely. Um, and we're feeling that it's necessary to coordinate onboarding sessions, succession planning sessions, wherever you want to call them, um, to get the new administrator with the home trust, Andrea, everyone there uh, acquainted with what it's going to take to administer those deed restrictions and, uh, of course, the rest of the scope of work. And there's there's deed restrictions beyond just the the water view and the weather horn neighborhoods, of course. So, um, based on everything I just said, uh, we would need to to make a small adjustment to the effective date uh, in the agreement. So take it from November one to October one. And it would also require a compensation increase from sixteen thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars, eighty-three cents to twenty-five thousand dollars, excuse me, twenty-five thousand, thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents for remainder of twenty twenty-five. Um, and staff is fine with that. That increase has meeting budgeted funds, um, in the twenty twenty-five budget for this work. And I don't know how much of it will be covered by the grant for the twenty twenty-five work. I haven't, uh, those that question yet, but there's some potential there maybe. Uh, but regardless, we have the funding to cover what's slated to happen in twenty twenty-five. Have any answer any questions? Andrea said she was planning to be here, and there she is. Um, have any answer any questions? And Andrea is here. If you all have any questions about the home trust and the trajectory they're on and their capability to take on the scope of work.
Perfect timing. Yeah.
Thanks. He told me six forty-two. I was like, I'm early.
Well, we've been through a lot going on.
Um, yeah, happy to answer any questions and, uh, I can fill you in on a bit of, a bit of something. Um. So we actually had, uh, three applicants, uh, already, and the first applicant was, is the one. Um, uh, she meets all of the criteria and, um, it's, uh, we're working on, uh, getting her hired. And she's in Durango, um, and she's willing to to come up, um, to Urae County as much as needed. Um, we're trying to figure out where we We're trying to figure out where we can maybe budget for a hotel room. A couple of times a month where, you know, if she came in for a city council meeting on Monday, she could stay through Tuesday for a town council or, or you know, something like that. But we're really excited to to bring her on. I have to admit, when you when Preston first opened, he was like, hey, can you somebody hire me the first of October? I had almost had a heart attack in his office, but we are making it actually happen. I was definitely thinking there is no way, but yeah, so. Very excited about that.
That's great. That's great. Other questions for Andrea? Anybody here in the room or on Zoom have questions on, you need this? Looking good.
I'll go to approve the agreement for services between Yuri County City of Yuri, Town of Ridgeway and Home Trust of Yuri County concerning affordable housing services. Including the change to the start date of October one, twenty twenty-five. Right, some change for that position to what Preston indicated.
Alright, motion made in seconded. All favor? Any opposed? Assistant Minister, thank you. That takes us to item twelve, the first reading ordinance number oh-three twenty twenty-five, amending section seven dash four dash eight landscape regulations. Which I mean is from code. She's back up.
Alright, thanks. Okay, so let me give you some background. You can scroll to the next page if you don't mind. Senate Bill twenty-four dash zero zero five prohibits local governments from allowing installation planting or placement of non-functional turf. Artificial turf or invasive plant species on commercial institutional industrial or common interest properties, street right of ways, parking lots, medians and other transportation corridors. Since Ridgeway is very water wise and water wise considerations have already been included as part of the current landscape regulations. Including limiting the use of high water turf. The current code does comply with a lot of portions of the Senate bill already. We prohibit noxious and invasive species. However, the current landscape regs do not comply due to our allowance of artificial turf in all areas as part of our non-live ground cover classification. So this is what's kind of prompted this modification. I can scroll on a little. Point your hand, I don't know. Maybe not. Oh, good. Okay, so the state mandate, the deadline for compliance is January first. You can actually scroll to the next one. And I just wanted to note on there that we can be more restrictive than the state requires, but we cannot be less restrictive. So some of our, like at least in our water wise considerations, we are more restrictive currently. So also considered as part of the landscape regulation update is this state adopted wildfire resiliency code. It's the first of its kind in Colorado and it's a state minimum code. It means it establishes the minimum requirement for all areas based on a statewide mapping effort. And in the mapping effort, all of Ridgeway was classified as moderate fire intensity risk. So this code has not been adopted by the town, but it's included only as a resource for folks that are designing their landscaping plans. So we mentioned it in the code update. And then next slide, please. At the same time, staff has noticed some issues with interpreting and enforcing the current landscape regulations that we wanted to just go ahead and clear up with this update. So there's been a lot of confusion about calculating the minimum requirements. We found that the way that the regulations are organized in certain sections is causing applicants to actually like skip things that are very applicable to what they're needing to comply with. And then lots of the landscaping plans that we're seeing don't have the level of detail that we're asking for. So we kind of found that reorganizing the subsections removing any extraneous words and being really concise without skipping any detail was kind of the the way to clean this up. Next slide. Thank you. So the proposed amendments will meet the intent, the original intent while also achieving compliance with the Senate bill. And then providing additional clarity. So I provided a clean copy of the code language in your packet, but I'm going to run through the red lines just hopefully pretty quick on screen so folks can kind of see what has changed. So if you don't mind, next slide. Under the intent section, we clarified the intent of the regulations and made it slightly more concise. This is also where we mentioned the state wildfire resiliency code. Next slide. Under applicability, we added a note that the regulations apply broadly to all construction and change of use projects. And then we removed a note about it applying to landscape projects exceeding twenty-five percent of the lot size. And replaced it with some language from the Senate bill. That says disturbance of more than fifty percent of the aggregate landscape area. The reason we did this is it's kind of resource intensive. If somebody's just doing a landscape project and not pulling a building permit, we don't really track that. So the only time that that happens is if there's a structural component to the landscape plan. So it's kind of hard to just figure out when somebody's messing around with twenty-five percent of their lot. So that's really just like a stack resource deal, but on this page also, we remove temporary certificate of occupancy for a similar reason. It says temporary certificate of occupancy for delay by winter weather. But the provision doesn't account for other unsuitable conditions for plants to become established, like water restrictions. So staff believes that the provision is kind of covered in the other code sections, installation standards and maintenance requirements, which are the last two sections. I will get to them eventually. Also, it's at the discretion of the building official to grant certificates of occupancy, including temporary certificates of occupancy. And extensions to building permits as needed to ensure that the plan set matches what gets built or installed. And we're kind of finding that people like latch on to the temporary certificate of occupancy section in order to just not do their landscaping until they're ready. So, which is fine, but yeah, it doesn't account for all things that would delay landscaping. And then at the bottom of that, it's okay, you can but at the bottom of that page, there's just a note on if there's conflict between what's in the state wildfire resiliency code and what's in our code. Then either the stricter one would prevail and that's just like standard throughout our code or the wildfire resiliency code would prevail if it's like the landscaping is kind of interesting because they want less landscaping in some areas and we're asking for landscaping in those areas. So they would govern. Okay, on this, thank you. On site and landscape plan development. In this section, we removed some duplicative language, which is covered in the previous section. We clarified some of the requirements. And consolidated some of the requirements that had very similar information, like we were asking for the same thing. In a submittal. Next slide. Yeah, just a lot of language cleanup here. Consolidating again. Next slide. In the water conservation section, instead of directing the reader to another code section when it talks about prohibited species and preferred species, we just moved this section up from a different area you'll see later. But I also wanted to note a couple of things that we added here. So in the prohibited species section, we included trees with aggressive root structures that are incompatible with pavement should be avoided in areas that are paved or may become paved. And that includes narrow leaf and landscape cottonwoods. We've had a lot of sidewalk seizing issues with those and I worked with Steven Schroeder with Public Works on kind of clarifying, letting people know that those are sort of problem trees, but they're fine if you want to plant them in your yard. Just not close to where sidewalks being installed or pathways. Next slide. Under E landscaping required, we provided some additional clarity. We made it slightly more concise. And this is where we remove the artificial turf as an option for non-live ground covers. And then explained that turf used to meet the live ground cover requirement should only be functional turf. So there's, that's like recreation fields and yards and things like that. Next slide. The table needed just a little bit of editing for clarity. I think it reads a little, a little bit better. And I think we're better at explaining how to use it now. Next slide, please. This section had no change the yeah, three of landscaping, we're going to move on. Under F general landscaping standards, we reorganized the section so that species diversity of trees is nested under the tree section. And we've also, this was a planning commission asked, but we increased the diversity required so that no diversity is required if you need to plant one to three trees, but anything beyond three. You have to provide some diversity there. Next slide. We also, in the same section, changed the size of shrubs. And decorative grasses, we specified what size. So it was five gallons and we switched it to three gallon size. And that allows for a little more diversity with shrubs, just and also finding stuff that's locally available. So that was really the only point there. And then we did include a note about fire awareness and ignition risk associated with certain types of mulch and that was another planning commission ad. And then I think this also includes that, yeah, this is the section that includes a note that artificial turf can be allowed on public recreation area or sports fields owned by the town or owned by a quasi-public or public entity. Because we don't want to preclude our ability to use the alternative materials on recreational facilities. And conserve water if it makes sense, so. Next page. And then here we just included a reference to our fence hedge and wall regulations where it was talking about fencing. Just fixing and air and consolidating on this page. Next slide, please. We consolidated the parking lot landscape standards. There was a lot of like sub bullets that got combined. And then we removed the mention of grass area for parking lots. Next slide. And then under exceptions or deviations, we explained that the town manager or whoever they designate can grant administrative approval for deviations from the regulations by up to ten percent of the regulation. And we explained the submittal requirements for the applicant if they're requesting a deviation. Next slide. And then this is the installation and maintenance section. So they're pretty clear and we didn't suggest much modification here. So at the August twentieth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting of the planning commission, a duly noticed public hearing was held for a text amendment. And background and code updates were presented by staff. The planning commission recommended approval of the text amendment with some modifications that were covered here and they're also listed in your packet separately. And the planning commission found that the approval criteria were met. And then just one other thing, I included an ordinance draft in your packet. But I actually have a non-substantive change to that draft. Just the title. So the title that is on your agenda is correct. So that's going to be brought to you for a second reading. And then with that, staff's just recommending that town council introduce ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty-five on first reading and set a public hearing for adoption on second reading or adoption consideration.
Thanks, Angie.
Thanks.
Any questions for Angie and Silv?
I do have a question. So the state law requires that artificial turf not be allowed in non-residential properties, but the way this is written is we will be pivoting it on residential properties as well. Do you have any insight? Was that a planning commission decision that come from you guys? Like, can I get some insight?
Sure, yeah. So, well, we don't see it very often, I will say that. Installed anyway, or part of the landscape designs that have come in since I've been here to install. Yeah, fake turf, astral turf or whatever. But we do have requirements about being very water wise. We have irrigation requirements. We also require a certain percentage of non-live ground cover that can be other materials like mulches and rocks and we allow for a lot of stuff that can save water. But isn't, you know, made of synthetic, synthetic materials basically that you get in our waterways. And that's covered a little bit in the Senate bill, like they discuss it. But they don't like
They only went as far as the commercial, which is what I was curious.
Right, yeah, ours here is more restrictive as well. My, I have a niece who's really, a lot of really bad allergies and they have, the city, they have artificial turf flonds that are good to play outside, which you really can't and it does make me a little nervous that we're just being more restrictive than the state when I feel like the whole initial reason for this was to try to align our our boundaries to to be in line with the state, but not necessarily consistent as I just curious about that more restrictive than.
And I don't think it's, I think it's interesting that you say you don't still have plans for it. I feel like it's something that people will often make the adjustment after that's not associated with a building permit. So it was just, it was just kind of kind of curious because when I think about these options, we're telling people to move away from mulch. Mulch is relatively cheap because if you get it when someone's chipping, that's why it went on my property and I'm moving away from it. But gravel and those landscapes are expensive and their life cycle can be shorter than an artificial turf. And so
Really short?
Well, they, they wash away, they end up in the road, like like they get compacted, like all of those things.
But our artificial turf.
It has a lifetime too, but like, I think. Well, but we accepted it on the athletic field and I made that argument up there. So like, I this
I wasn't a big fan.
Yeah, I and I'm sure, I'm sure planning commission had this conversation, so I'm not trying to like re-lenigate it. And we have to include the commercial part, like that's not, we have to do that, but it, I do have, no. I think there are places where for the public good, we need to restrict choice more and I'm not sure the the restriction reward weight here comes out.
We can certainly recommend an amendment to this if you want.
Kind of open and
I mean, it's not like something is done often, but I think there are certain specific cases, whether or maintenance reasons, allergy reasons, whatever.
Is that some, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Is that something that would be able to be applied in a case by case basis to the town manager or to you know, we, we just went over, there are exemptions and we can have exemptions. Is this something like if a parent comes to a staff and says, hey, my kid has all of these allergies. Can I please have a whatever by whatever in my yard? Is that something that would be?
Not how it's written. Not how it's written, but we can certainly modify it to be that way. It's just interesting that the Senate bill. Talks about like the negative impacts of. Synthetic turfs, but then doesn't restrict them on residential properties, so that's really just where it came from.
When I, I just think. Is that a choice I would personally make? No. But I think about it as different than something. System-wise that you're building into a structure that's going to be there for fifty years, a hundred years? Because any of these landscaping choices don't have that, right? And I do think there's, there's downsides. But there are, may, yeah. There are some things that I'm like, yes, this is the right thing for the public.
You know, the, the wonder is that those that might want an exception. Education campaign, it's like a fertility clinic or something. If they were to choose that one, I, I was actually planning on replacing my dead patch of grass. After I read this, I said, yeah.
But right now the way it's written, they don't even allow to have that education and make a choice. I, I really think that people should have the choice of. I would rather align with the state.
Well, I, I've not paid for that, but I'll pay for this at the time. So, so to you guys.
Honestly, I'm like, I, I don't actually, I brought it up and I don't feel like super duper duper passionate about it. I was more really curious on. How we got to this point, like what was.
The planning commission didn't suggest. But slation, but not forced, I think. Pretty obvious that that was going to be a tough sell statewide, um but. I think that fighting for she was, was the favorite. That, that status, so. Again, so to counsel, if you want to suggest a change. I just think that the downsides are, should turn probably.
That's, but that's a personal, your opinion.
Well, but if you talk about. Well, but the, the question of where it goes from personal opinion and personal choice to. Community decision is what's the runoff implication? And that is where. If we're installing it in a public. You know, place, we've got the retention pond, that's what they've done out at, you know, similar athletic park. That is the difference, right? Um. And do we want to get into, are you keeping your wastewater that. Could contain microplastics on your property? Probably not. Um and so that, that is the line between it's my personal choice and it affects. Exactly, and so, sorry for talking through, through all, I appreciate it. That, that to me is the difference.
Like secondhand smoke, right? I mean, we're just starting to learn the impacts of the plastic being on our worldwide environment and the last thing you can say.
I think my own way, my, my consideration would be. Just to add like a section of. If there are extenuating circumstances, town manager can decide.
Honestly, those people aren't going to come to us and get a permit anyway, they're just going to do it.
At least then we've considered it, but that would be writing that there is a chance. To like ask for that exemption, because if it's written right now, they might even allow for an exemption, like I. I would be much more comfortable about it if there was a chance for an exemption, like a process for the person to follow.
But I think, I think part of the problem and what we're saying is if they ask for an exemption. Well, the discussion is. How does it not negatively impact other folks? It's going to be a fairly heavy. Lift in terms of where's the water off your property coming in, where's it coming?
A winner can choose if they want to.
Is this something is, you know, we're managing, yeah.
But I also find. Not having that and having, you know, if a person wants to have some other sort of. Non-live ground cover.
Yeah.
We can, that is also weighted.
I mean, we, Holly, you and I talked about core options on the thing, I mean, there, there are other options that exist and the more. The more regulations like this that are promulgated throughout the country. The more we're going to see alternatives to plastics.
I would speak to bring this before the sustainability advisory board, that they would, they would trail existing. Just based on the nature of sustainability advisory.
One that would be like, you know, it's, it's a, so like quarterly update coming, but still would love. Way to put that lens on everything we do. I think that's a really good point, Terry.
Okay, so we want to, so consensus.
I think I'm fine.
I think I've talked to myself into being fine with it.
I don't, I don't want to look for that option for.
Yeah, I'm with you. Without an option to mediate or to put in some effort. I just want to say their part, artificial turf is not the only option for someone who's got allergies.
All of the reasons that someone might ask for exemption, that's why I still think that option for exemption.
But I, I don't think so in terms of, and I don't, it's just my opinion, just like. The fact that plastic. Artificial turf, it's going to have a lot of impacts on everything is a very good reason to the plan. So, I'm just, just trying to give you the other side. So, so at this point, somebody just needs to make a motion and see if it applies.
I move to introduce the. Updated section seven dash four, sorry, I was not on the exact spot, seven dash four. Dash eight landscape regulations.
As this uh order to.
Thanks.
Discussion. That takes us to. Item number thirteen, Tara presentation and request of direction under the. You're wanting to be right up on that, it's much better than being able to hit that, that's fine. And you turned it off. Red light on, so tap that firmly. Very low, it's on.
Okay now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Somebody told me last time they couldn't hear a word I said, so. Okay. Thank you all uh for having us today. I'm here to present the um revised. Plan for the Ridgeway Fuse Creative Main Street Program. I'll share a little bit with you about why we're doing it and how we did it. And then I'm here with the Fuse co-chair Donna Jaffe, who will be presenting the content of the plan. Um next slide please. So the last few strategic plan, and I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Ramley has been part of this as well as part of the Fuse Committee. And the last few strategic plan was created and finalized in twenty twenty, so. Um oh my gosh, five years have already gone by and um the, the Fuse um committee met last November. Um and did their annual retreat and kind of. Found that they really needed, we needed to ask ourselves some deeper questions. We had revisited our, our plan every year. And were able to just kind of update it and keep moving forward, but this time we really felt is that we needed to ask ourselves some fundamental questions. About our role um and how we were best serving the community, especially given some of the. Feedback that we had heard from business owners in twenty twenty-four. Um and particularly around Clinton Street, some of the needs that that part of town had. And so um. We um. We decided to set out a series of dialogues to help inform our thinking. And make sure we were grounded in a lot of different perspectives as we created the plan. Um as well as best practices in the field. Um so we. Um first started with a dialogue because we recognized that there was some dual lack of role clarity between Ridgeway Fuse. Creative Main Street Program and the Chamber. Um so we started there, we invited the Chamber Board. Um and I want to recognize um Councilwoman Scoville as our chamber liaison who helped to. Highlight that need for clarity. So we had um a facilitated dialogue with, between the Fuse Committee. And the Ridgway Area Chamber facilitation provided by DOLA here in this room um back in February. And that I think was really helpful in terms of illuminating some of the areas where we weren't clear. Um and some of the areas where we still needed to um to dig a little bit deeper in terms of finding clarity. Um in partnership with the Chamber and Colorado Tourism Office. Um we hosted a series of workshops and I think um many of you were part of at least some of those. Um that were put on by Down Town Colorado Inc. to help us assess um some of our strengths as a community and some of our opportunities. Um for economic vitality and I presented that report to you last month. Um. We then had um a facilitation that was again sponsored by DOLA um with. Matt Ashby from Airs and Associates and he came and worked with the Fuse Committee um for an extended. Period to really take a look again at some of the things that we found to be important and the Fuse Committee um recommended that we do. Um the Fuse Committee then spent a couple of months deliberating and really looking at those priorities. And refining those priorities and the result of all of that is the plan that I will present to you along with Donna today. Next slide please. So we, we refined our mission, vision. Um we, we created a, a partnership statement, which is really recognizing that the Fuse program of town is. Um intended to be a kind of a convener. Um and to really be working broadly across the entire community and cross-section of the, of the stakeholders of the community and that's part of our role. Is to create space for dialogue and planning as it relates to um economic and cultural vitality. Um another thing we really decided to focus on was that we wanted to. Embrace the kind of principles of the Main Street movement. Which is a national movement that recognizes Main Streets, historic Main Streets, as really the heartbeat of the community. Um and so when that heartbeat is strong, the rest of the community is strong. And what we were hearing from many um businesses on our historic Main Street. Clinton Street that they were struggling, we took that as a sign that we really needed to put some focus there, not to the exclusion of the rest of the community. But recognizing that heartbeat is a really critical role. Um and we were seeing some turnover um on that street. It's also, there's been a tremendous amount of investment. Um on Clinton Street over the last ten years between the ramp-up Ridgway project. Private investment in the Sherbino and, and you know, and the businesses there, the, the um. Old Firehouse, the space to create, there's been so much investment in that street, we really want to make sure that it thrives. So that was. That's kind of represents the heart of the plan, but by no means the entirety of the plan. Um and the other thing we decided to do was to reorganize our thinking to align with the. Main Street Program. So the ma- Main Street is again a national movement with. Main Streets across the country and it has four main points. Um so we thought this is a time-tested framework and model for economic and cultural vitality, so we want to align our plan with that. Since we are an accredited mainstream, so those four points are design, organization, promotions and economic vitality. So you'll see the plan is organized around those four points. Um we created sort of a mini mission statement under each of those four points uh to help guide us. Um yeah, I think that's, and it's, and just to kind of reiterate why it is a Main Street Program, it's also simultaneously our creative district. So we take, you know, the Main Street framework and we really take it. You know, utilize the creative assets in the community and the, the creative district approach as well within that Main Street approach, so it's a hybrid approach. Any questions about that part so far? Okay, I am going to turn it over to Donna, who will kind of walk you through the highlights of the plan itself.
Hi, as Tara said, I'm Donna Jaffe and I'm one of the co-chairs of Future Born with Madison Etheridge. And um I know there's quite a lot of information on this slide. Um I'm not going to go through the whole thing with you, but I will just talk a little bit about some of the highlights and um. Some of the focuses for us as we move forward. Um as Tara said, this is, it's, it's taken us many months to get here. But the group feels extremely positive about it. It's a very focused plan, it's a robust plan. Um it's very thoughtful and it is actually very flexible. A lot of these um. Items on here you could see almost as ideas. Um and we're going to continue to evaluate how we're doing on all of this as the years progress. Um when I look at this, I see that we can divide this kind of into three buckets. I know we have our. Four of Main Street approaches up here, but then within all of the activities that are outlined here. We have these three buckets, those activities that we'll continue to do. Things like happy hours and the first Fridays, the walking map, the mini grant program. Those items that will support and develop a lot of these which are new. We'll do that with collaborators, something like the county by defense calendar that Tara's working on right now with. Ray and Brad, public art, baseline data resources, something we've heard quite a bit from a lot of different stakeholders that's necessary. And then last, there's the items that we'll explore. And these are things like the pop-up shop, pop-up shop opportunities, streetscape improvements and lots more. I wanted to point out that there is one activity that was left off this list. Um under economic vitality, we're adding a number nine. And that is to explore Clinton Street as an entertainment district, downtown development authority. And or a certified local government status. And for us, that means that we're going to learn about each of these and see if they can, it could be worthwhile. As a structure to support us as we look to ignite Clinton Street. Um so again, I'm not going to go over this point by point. Um but I can offer a couple of examples of how we're going to work with this plan. Um so under organization number nine, co-create Clinton Street event calendar. So that's our bullet point and our task activity. So. All have seen, there's been an uptake in new events on Clinton Street in the past year, from the Film Festival block party to the Colorado Boy. Three Pizza and Beer Event, Pride Celebration, Closed Off the Street. Fed obviously had extraordinary success this year. And Fuse even received a mini grant application from someone wanting to create a regular Sunday supper club. On Clinton Street as a closed-off program. So we realize there's quite a lot of energy around these outdoor gatherings. Um and each entity sort of currently working alone. So we, what we see as our role here is to lead the effort, to convene the businesses, other stakeholders. Create, that create an event calendar together and then assist in coordination of communication between those stakeholders. Um another example could be seen under economic vitality, number six. Where um explore opportunities for encouraging creative and or light industrial business development. And this is something that's been coming up for us. Um and currently two Fuse members independently have started to look at what this means economically for Ridgway. And what it might take for Fuse, working with town, possibly other collaborators, collaborators to be a part of this kind of early development. Um it's extremely early stages and it is exploration, but it's initiative that fits with the master principles and our own book. So I'd love to take questions if you have any thoughts, suggestions.
Any questions for Tara or Donna?
I'd love to see it. I'm interested to know more about the Sunday supper clubs. That sounds like such.
Fun idea, right?
Yeah, and the uh. Community corridor, I'm sorry, what did you call the Clinton Street?
It's a Main Street, it's a historic Main Street.
Yes, no, I know that, but the, you referred to it as the. Community hub or like turning it into a.
Yeah. It really is, yeah, that's exactly what it is, yeah. And to focus there and as Tara said, that kind of sets the groundwork for the expansion of vitality throughout the whole town.
I think putting our money where our mouth is to have. That vibrant community there, so beautiful and I'm really appreciative to you and Tara for all the work you do.
Thank you, and the whole group, there are ten of us, volunteers supporting the group.
You have a question, you have comments from council?
You have any questions or comments from the council? Anything from the Zoom crowd or anybody here in the room?
Okay, thank you all so much.
I move to accept, adopt, approve the 2025 to 2028 Fuse Creative Main Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership to this. Tara's up on this next one, too, presentation, first direction on the Decker community to manage.
So this is, I'm actually co-presenting this as well with Ariel Bialek, who is on video with us and who's our contracted Decker Community Room Coordinator. I'll just give a little bit of background. So I'll just remind council that 18 months ago, we had launched the Decker Community Room and direction from this council chose to take an sort of a merging approach, an emergent approach, I'll call it, with the room. So instead of kind of pre-designing and pre-forming how the room was going to be used and programming it all out, we decided to really install basic furnishings. Is this giving feedback?
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit, yes. So we, we decided to just furnish it on the, on a basic level for functionality and then live with it and learn from the community and through the use of it, what it really needed to be, with the intention to keep art on the walls as much as possible. So I think we've really accomplished that and have also learned a lot and gotten feedback from people. One of the risks of taking that kind of approach is that it can be seen as, you guys don't have a plan. You don't have to figure it out. And in fact, it was actually very intentional, but we not overprogrammed. And then we learn along the way. So this is part of that. And so the staff in, in conversation with people in the community and room users have created a Decker Room management plan that'll guide us as an accompany and document to the Fuse program plan. So that's what we're going to present to you tonight. And part of that also incorporates opportunities for ongoing community feedback and dialogue around evolving the sofa room. So with that, Ariel, are you available to come off speakerphone?
Hello.
Thank you. And then Preston, if you'd be kind enough to pull up the plan, is that doable?
While Preston is pulling up the plan, I can just give you some fun statistics on our usage from January to June. We, as of now, have 97 users of the space in our proximity software, 83 of which are active. We've had 286 check-ins in the space in that time period. We have hosted art classes, committee meetings, press events, community events, First Friday events, many private events, the theater arts, various trainings, many community workshops, wellness workshops, game night, film, focus groups, and board retreat. Or rather, several board retreats.
That was awesome, Ariel. I know Preston has your presentation pulled up. Has put together this biannual report and has committed to doing that for us every, twice a year so we can see what the usage of the room is looking like. Would you mind just scrolling through that slowly, Preston? Thank you. And thank you, Ariel, for putting this together for us.
Yeah, so you can.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. I mean, you, we're just kind of walking you through what the calendar of events look like for this time period, starting in January. And I think we determined that the, the room usage from last year to this has been about doubled. And you can see, you know, that, that the usage increase increases as you move away from the winter months.
I think it's really exciting to see the, the space really coming into its own and really being seen as an asset for the community. I really want to credit Ariel for, her work in creating a welcoming space. Got the exhibition calendar up. We've got exhibitions planned to the end of the year, so well done there. There's our revenue for the year.
Yeah, and those are just all the, give you a nice snapshot of what goes on. I just read through those. And yes, and now that takes us into the management plan moving forward from 2025 into 2028. And this walks us through a really robust and thorough embracing of the way that the space has been working as a flexible, workable, multipurpose environment. And it really has been, and we've allowed folks to envision how they want to use the space and, and they, and they really have. And so as we move forward, I think it's going to be really great to continue to work with what people are wanting to do in the space and envision new ways to activate the space through consistent use and, and community involvement. So you can see that we have, we have goals that vary from ongoing and then short-term, medium-term, and long-term goals for the management plan. So as we move down, you'll see that we're going to, we're focusing more on communication about events, usage, and opportunities. That's something that we hope to engage with the destination marketing partners to increase our reach of promotions strategically. And that should be very exciting. And we have also done a lot of talking about signage and visibility for the space as it's on the part of Clinton Street that gets maybe the least amount of concentrated traffic. Activating that area has been an interesting challenge as well as sharing a residential, a residential space. Having that mixed use has also been an interesting challenge for us to, yeah, to, to get, sorry, to get the traffic over into the, the Decker Room. And now, yeah, moving into expanding volunteer intern and partnership opportunities to support programming and operations. We're so lucky to be a part of such a close-knit community. You know, we have CTC meeting in the space and a lot of opportunities to connect with folks who can help, potentially help enrich the space in the, in our long-term plans with community engagement and networking. And we also have a very thoughtful plan for enhancing the physical space and operations to support the evolving functionality of the space. So this is kind of an ongoing thing that we, you know, discovered what, what really needs to be done as people have used the space in so many different ways. And so lighting is, is an issue for us. And we've already been addressing some of these things on an ongoing basis. So, yeah, so I think the, the what we're really focusing on right now is reviewing our update, sorry, reviewing our, our policies and engaging in community feedback to really solidify what we've gotten, the feedback that we've gotten through people's usage and anecdotally. We're excited to roll out a virtual suggestion box that we welcome all users of the space to take. So I, I know that that means some of, some of you guys sitting here, we have, we have a handy QR code for folks to just go ahead and take a very, very brief, but important survey to give us an even better sense of how people are feeling, you know, a couple of years into using this space. Yeah, so we, we really invite you to help us evolve the space into an even better next version of the Decker Room if we continue to make changes.
Great, thank you. That's awesome. Feedback. It was really cool to see the six-months calendar.
Yeah.
Everything that happened in that room. Testament to how Ariel works, how everybody works, just keeping that place moving. It's awesome. It's awesome.
I would definitely take this, this virtual suggestion box thing. But if I could add one thing to add to the physical space and operations of your room, could we consider getting some sort of acoustics over the plumbing?
Yes.
Have any time someone utilizes.
Every time you're eating in there, you just hear the flushing.
It's funny, I notice it as much when it's like, like the ribbon cutting, when it's like Ridgway people, but we've had C O L there last, the whole time I was just like, oh my God.
But if we, because I don't notice it when we're like, come and see our Decker Room, I'm like.
Most people laugh.
Sure.
And we did talk to the space folks about insulating those pipes to at least reduce that sound. I haven't triggered music or something. No, no, we didn't, we didn't insulate.
We can definitely add that to.
It's not a zone list.
I thought I should have been on the list. It was a little overexcited, I think.
I thought it was on the list. With our space, we pray. The physical space is there, so they're the ones who have to make it happen. Look, that's, that's a good point. Thank you for remembering that. I'd say my main priority, and is having it open more hours and more consistent hours and have it's on here to post on the door regular hours and get more volunteers involved, get more artists involved, train them to talk to people when they come in. Because it's, I'd say our biggest challenge is the number of times I've heard from people that they tried to go there and it's closed. And I totally understand, I'm not criticizing, I'm just thinking that's, that's a real priority. We're trying to get people more aware of the space and more appreciative of it so they get in. So.
Totally agree.
That'd be line number one. Anyone else have something, anything they want to add? Anybody online or in the room here? I, I think the fact that it's an open slate is pretty amazing. During that last event, we were able to completely configure it. I wanted, I went back over it. Yeah, it was pretty flexible.
Yeah, that flexibility works for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited and happy with the tables that we got, chairs. As Terry says, the flexibility of the room is fantastic. And it, it is getting utilized, it is getting used. I just like to see more.
Yeah, awesome. And I think to kind of refer back to the Fuse program plan, one of the, one of the priorities in there is to work with the galleries across the downtown area to, because, because a lot of, a lot of galleries get the same feedback, like, here, we can never open. They're like, ah, but we feel like we're open as much as we possibly can be with our capacity. And I would say that with the Decker Room at this moment, too. And so there's been the idea of, could we, could we work collaboratively to see if it's even viable to have some sort of shared volunteer pool that could help establish open hours more broadly across downtown? So we'll see if that's something that there's energy and capacity for. And obviously, our priority for the town property will be keeping it open more often, thinking about how we can also fit into the larger ecosystem.
I'll add it to the scan. I'm not sure it deserves another neon sign at the risk of the eye rolls through my fellow council piece. A sign that says this room is powered by the sun is.
I, I took a picture of the, the handout line.
I also love the idea of having artists working in that space when it's open. And like, you could have a sign to help, saying, my art. Like, that's such a cool.
Yeah, but. I'm at Calphus, been working in and outside the space quite a bit. We need to expand on that.
Sure. I used that, so I just want to give a shout out to Tara and Ariel, of course, but over the last, say, 18 months? I don't know, 18 months then? The thought and efforts to promote the efficiency or, yeah, well, the effectiveness and the efficiency of the space, I think, it may have been highlighted, but the proximity space software being instituted, I think, is a huge deal. And I love it because Ariel showed me how to use it and it works really well for me. It may not work well for everybody, but I think that's just, you know, a step in that direction and a testament to how hard Tara and Ariel have worked to, to make it streamlined and more accessible for folks instead of like antiquated way of taking checks, sending checks back, pay for applications, stuff like that. So a lot of, yeah, I was, I mean, a lot has really gone into getting it where, where it is now, as you can see from the presentation.
Yes.
A lot more than is been highlighted.
Yeah. Huge credit to Tara, to Ariel, and to local community. You guys have done it for sure.
Thanks, yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, it's pretty cool for Ariel to be able to open the storage closet door from, like, her house. People need that. Ariel, is there anything more you want to add?
Um, no, I, I mean, I don't think so. I think, I appreciate that, the feedback. I'd love for you guys to fill out the survey thoughtfully and with some, in particular, you know, when you're thinking about it, you know, when we're balancing this issue of like, keeping the space open for, for artists versus making sure the, you know, prioritizing events and being available to have events happen kind of at a drop of a hat in, in the space. Just as you're answering those questions, you think thoughtfully about how we can best balance those things without, you know, losing our minds with, you know, rescheduling volunteers and stuff around, you know, around events that we, we need to have take place in the space. So I mean, I think that's, that's just like the real crux of the issue here is like, keeping the great balance between our creative community and, and all the other ways that we use the space. And so just love, just love to hear your thoughts about that as you fill out the survey.
Great. Thank you.
I will add if I may that we, Ariel and I have slated a meeting for November 3rd, 6:00 PM. And everybody will, will send an invite out broadly for anybody who's interested in discussing these issues in more detail. So we'll, we'll be doing a kind of a campaign around the suggestion box to get as much input as we can. And then we'll have a learning conversation with room users and other stakeholders to dig into some of the nuances of how we implement this plan and, and balance as Ariel set these different needs.
No, thank you. Thanks, Tara. Anything else on this topic? We do need to make a motion.
I move to, sorry.
It's all good.
First page. Okay. I move to accept the Decker Community Room Management Plan.
Second.
Motion made in second in all favor. Any opposed? Best of you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you all. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Next time. Thank you. I'm number 16, no, 15, sorry, update, we were to a sustainability advisory board. Welcome.
All right, hello and thanks. This is our second update of the year, and we'll plan for another one in December. There's two purposes for these updates. One is to get a little bit more detail and. There's two purposes for these updates. One is to get a little bit more detail on what we're up to um beyond what we get out of Terry. And uh also gives you a chance to get to know us a bit better. Um, so we'll be taking terms during these presentations.
Great work.
Right, first one. The S A B has been in existence for three years. Of the original members, three have resigned and three turned out in uh in August. Uh, we realized we need to do something to uh provide some consistency on the uh committee um by staggering terms. So we created a draft policy. Um, and the, the main keys of this draft policy is that two members will uh be turned out every August and um replacement members um will only serve out the terms of the members that they replace. So we keep on schedule. Um, Dave and Dana have agreed to uh serve for another year to start the stagger. Um, they need to be approved by you guys. And I don't know if that's something we want to do now or.
I think it's the next level that you have after.
Oh, okay. Like in my mind. Um, okay. So next slide. So we had twelve work items that we came up with for this year. Um, ones up there with the check mark or ones that we completed. Um, for example, there were like twenty thirty resolution. Thank you very much. Um, the ones in gray, I'm not going to talk about uh because we don't have much um uh room on those. So I'm mostly just going to talk about the ones in green. Um, okay, next slide. So this is the big E. Uh, this is the net zero twenty thirty roadmap. We've been working on a detailed inventory of everything that burns fossil fuels to the town owns and uses. Um, the next step is to look for value replacements of these things. And the S A B is going to spend some time and uh, you know, help out a bit that. Um, as a general rule, we're only going to replace things through uh attri- attrition. Um, but we want to avoid things that um, we, we want to avoid replacing something with another fossil fuel burning piece of equipment or vehicle. Um, so that's a general, but a couple of exceptions to that rule is I think we ought to be very aggressive in replacing um our main equipment that has uh, that are two cycle motors, gas motors, that are extremely grueling. And in fact, uh Colorado now has a regulation twenty nine that limits um the use of gas powered lawn and garden equipment for public entities. So we should try to become more compliant with that. Um, another section, an exception to this general rule of replacing it through attrition is um space and water heating. Um, we replace those with heat pumps. We can start saving operational costs immediately. So that would be a good thing to do. What I think we want to do is start some pilot projects and demonstration projects in twenty twenty six. So for example, we ought to try and replace a couple of trimmers. Um, so a lot of the maintenance staff thinks of using those, probably with some additional batteries so that we can chase, change out tires uh when they need to. Uh, it'd be nice if we could try um getting an E V powered uh riding mower and see how that goes. Um, we would really like to replace the uh town hall heat um heating system with a heat pump um which would eat both the uh, the space and water. Um, that would be a great demonstration project that we could use for everybody that's building Ridgeway now and, and using, you know, wanting to use heat pumps. Cause there's not a lot that experience with heat pumps that drive hydraulic heating systems like we have here in town hall. Um, and then uh be great with public forests if they need a new pickup this year. If one of theirs eight breaks down, again, it'd be nice to replace it with uh, with an E V. Um, most of all or all of the funding, at least I'd say much of the funding uh for these pilot projects will come from the impact accelerator grant if we have it, if we get it. So we have put in some requests in the impact grant for this kind of thing. Um, but if not, we still need budget to do this because if we're gonna take this twenty thirty resolution seriously, we've got to get the work on. So um, so we need to think about some budget. All right. Engineering, well, engineering ordinance. Um, this has been on our radar for quite a while. Thanks to Dana for championing it. Um, we don't want to invent a wheel. So what we did is we looked at engine lighting ordinances from a number of towns around Colorado. Um, they're all fairly similar. Um, you know, looking at Aspen, Tyrride, Denver, um Winter Park, among others. Um, so we on this S A P picked out the provisions that we thought were uh made most sense for Ridgway. And this is what we came up with. Um, first was a two minute idling time. Uh, that's something that we on board chose. Um, there would exclude vehicles that need to be idling for safety purposes or for functionality, like cement mixers, for example, you want to turn those off. Um, it also excluded emergency and law enforcement vehicles and vehicles stuck in traffic, which doesn't happen a lot around here, but now and then five o'clock coming from Tyrride it does. Um, and it would exclude transportation vehicles while they're loading and unloading. So these are the provisions that we kind of thought, looking at all those that we saw that made more sense for Ridgway. And that's what we'd like to add with ordinance. Um, we would like to try and get ordinance ready for a percuting for your next meeting in October. Um, okay, community outreach. Fine. So we had a goal of doing two community outreach events this year. Uh, one that we've done, this is third year is our ride and ride event. And I apologize, I have a mental block with Renaissance and Rondevo. I was never good at French. Um, but of course we're talking about the Rondevo, not the Renaissance. Um, uh, and it's, it's a good event to have. We were a little bit disappointed with the number of attendees. Um, had somewhat the same problem last year. It seems to make sense to hold it with the Rondevo. Um, just because there's more people attending that, but we need to reevaluate. Um, it's an event that we'll want to continue to do. We just need to rethink a little bit and see how we can get more people there and, and interested in, in looking at and driving um E Vs.
Are you here? Let's interrupt. Are you here? A couple of month or two ago and that one you mentioned like having a sandwich board sign.
I said I would do it next year.
Oh, I.
Show attention to it.
I think one thing.
People know that it's.
Right. One, one thing that we didn't do this year that I think we should do next year is actually have a booth in the park. Uh, you know, directing people and you can use that juice for some other um electrification outreach and things like that. So that's something we might consider for next year. Um, okay. And then the resilience hub we're cutting, I think went quite well. It was uh, there's sixty or seventy people, I think, you know, just rough estimate, which is very good attendance for, for an event like that. Um, what was really cool is the decor room was off grid during that event. So the lights stayed on and the heating system stayed on. It was really cool. Um, you know, I feel that education region and outreach is a good purpose for the S A B. And I think that's something that we need to think a little bit more about and, and expand on next year. Look at doing more events, especially with twenty thirty um net zero coming along. There's a lot of outreach that we, we can and should be doing. Um, okay, next one. So the uh model O energy part and carbon coating, it's now available. Um, and I know that staff is looking at um uh deciding when to, when Ridgway should adopt it. Um, uh, one thing that we in the S A B have been um recommending is that uh Ridgway adopt the all electric or amendment for residential construction. Um, and I know there's, this is something that we need to think carefully about. We want to do it at the right time when it's practical. And we want to make sure that we have sufficient outreach and education. I mean, it makes a lot of sense. If you're building your home, just make it all electric. We're going to save money, but we need to make sure that we get that message out in a way that people understand and uh can, can use going forward. Both, you know, uh people that are building homes and the builders and the uh architects that design. So there's some outreach that we need to do. Um, uh, and this is something that again, we've looked for in the impact accelerator grant. Uh, you know, uh E A P is going to do a bunch of outreach if, if we can get that right. So um, that, that will be, that would be very useful. Um, okay, the next one. So the um S A B uh got volunteers for the Ridgway concert series to handle the the trash cans and trying to get to the right stuff in the right can. Um, it's really hard to do. Um, and part of the, well, the reason it's so hard to do, the, the plastic cups are pretty easy to get into the right bin. Trash is pretty easy to get in the right bin. Uh, the compostable is a nightmare because um there are tucket packets and things buried in, in the, in their, you know, the food um items. So it's just really hard to do. And even though we had people looking like cogs over those bins, it's just really hard to do. Um, I think, I think we can do better though. I think we can model ourselves after some other towns like Tyrride. And you know, first start would be to try and get to the point where our food vendors only use compatible compostable containers um and, and items. And that would be, that would be a start. Um, so it's something that I think we on this will be able to take a closer look at next year and see if we can e- expand that. Um, try to reduce the use of plastic even recycling because we don't know where that goes. You can use aluminum cups and reusable cups. There's a lot of ideas that we can, can do. And I think we, we need to do better with that. Okay, that's, um, any questions on any of this?
Thanks, Dave. Um, yeah, especially on this last one. I totally agree. And I've been trying to push this for a number of years, just myself and my involvement in this series. We need to probably need to start, we definitely need to start right now, putting together a set of guidelines for our vendors that says if you're going to vent, you're going to sell food and drink or what, anything at the Ridgway concert series, you have to.
Right. And so you've done some research and we actually have a draft of, of just that thing that Dana, I think, come up with it somewhere. Or you.
Ego action.
Yeah.
It's been helpful. It's, it's, there's obviously vendors all over the place that are already prepared to do that, do that at various events. So we just, it's not that much more than a burden. I did this, I did the composting, we said in exchange for the grass ticket. Just talking with the vendors and they said it's actually less expensive. So I have wood and spoons and things are cheaper than plastic ones.
Okay. I think the other thing too is, you know, we can get our program up and running if the town does it for town events for a year or so. I would like to look at that being something that is expected when you're using town facilities.
Right.
But if we have to kind of do the legwork ahead of time, so it's not onerous on people running events, we have those vendors, these folks know how to run a zero waste event in our town facilities.
And it's not an easy handout for the food trucks to be like, hey, these.
Well, and then once we've done it, these food trucks know how to do it. So if you're Ridgway, Rondevo, where you're at any event, you've got folks who are up to speed.
Two, two things. One, um, to your point, I think we, we come up with a policy that we get to our vendors, but also I think we give them uh some information of our way to get.
Yeah, resources.
Resources. So that's one thing. The other thing I like your um point that is, um, I'm, I'm a big, I'm a big fan of pilot projects. And to make the Ridgway concert series our pilot project, then we can roll out to other events um to use the Ridgway facilities. I think it's a great idea.
Can I, can I throw something out there that's concert series adjacent? Love your valley, those lovely glass cups. Want to see how many we can just keep cycling within the community.
I was getting my cabinet and I donated twenty to Seventh Sense this year.
But it's like, she just don't want any more of them. I'll, I'll keep a couple of them. But I want to figure out how much they cost. And if it's twenty five dollar entry, can I get it for twenty two or make it twenty seven if you need to buy one? So it's I don't know. Just throwing it out.
They don't let you run them anymore anyways.
I say a lot of people just collecting the, the cheap aluminum cups, reusing those too.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I get the tasting thing for the tasters, but we all have tasters, whether it's from us or from someone else.
I, I agree with that. And uh, in that same vein, uh, I know that you're a uh, Mountain Air Music Series uses those so plat cups. I think we should maybe look into the so plat, the like squishy.
I'm super drink out of, but yes, they look complicated. They look awful. They're, they're functional and an earthspur. You get a dollar off a drink.
Yeah.
We don't buy any. Yeah. And.
And you bring reusable and I think, I don't know. But anyway, all those good things. I really, what I'm saying is I'm super psyched about this one. And if I could help you out.
All right.
Real passionate about it.
We will make sure that we.
Like when I had plastic cups at the ribbon cutting.
But any other comments? I know this is a lot of stuff I should have allowed you to get interrupted while I was talking, but.
No, it's all right. I just like to reject the S A B. Great thanks to Preston for the guidance he's given, the committee. It's, it's helped us mature and get to the point where we can do these presentations.
So like we're, we're starting to hit our slide, our stride on the committee. So that's.
And so now you feel like you've got a path for getting things like the ordinance to, like Preston to get to us. So we're not running circles.
I think the idling thing is a good example of that. We, we, we now know how to go about doing things that's how.
And to your point earlier, and to Tara's point, how do we support you guys to be more involved in processes? Like we just had a conversation about landscaping. And we were looking at it from a sustainability standpoint. How do we get the S A B more involved in these discussions and things like this?
I think just bring it to us. I mean, that is, I know that the landscaping, I mean, we, one of our things on our uh, uh, well, work items is turf replacement. So that's, that's uh similar. It's, you know, it's in the same vein. I think we just need to, we need to know that these things are coming down the pipe too, or that you're working on them. And maybe that's part of the thing with the lay, you know, with the executive members to make sure that things that you're discussing that we should know about or work on uh, or that you think we should work on, you know, we, we hear about.
Yeah, we just said before you showed up, um, as you presented uh a new, this is a ordinance. So some landscape, the landscape ordinance that prohibits the use of artificial turf for residential contention. So if your liaison is efficient, we'll bring it to the next S A B meeting. Right.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's the best way to do it. Or, you know, call me up or whoever, you know. You, you, you know who we are. So it calls up.
Well, thanks for all this. I, I also want to throw up, but I'm really glad that engine that this is finally coming before us. We've been talking about it for years and years. And it's, it's more and more of an issue. I had somebody stop me in space to create today and say that more and more delivery vehicles are parking right door, rear windows in my long time. It's just, you know, it's, it's a problem. It's bigger. So while we're doing that, anything else anybody want to add? Thanks, Dave. Appreciate you being here.
Is that?
Appreciate the update. Uh, next time on the agenda is appointment of members to the Ridgway Sustainability. Is this your question?
Uh, yes, sir. So we will hook the terms for Joyce, Joyce Paulan, again, I versus Dave Jones expired on August ten. Joyce elected not to continue her membership. Dana, Dave, her presidential state, appointed to one year terms as uh, David was saying. So uh Dana and Dave are waiting for consideration for one year terms and attempted solicited uh letters of interest for that vacant position asked by uh Joyce Stephen. Uh, but we didn't receive any letters of interest by the deadline. So we'll modify that notice of vacancy and they're posted.
Okay. We did, did have one interested member show up for my meeting. So yeah.
I have to point Dana Iverson, Dave Jones to the Sustainability Advisory Board for one year terms. Next time to readvertise a vacant and a safety position.
Okay.
Thanks.
You think that I don't have any there? Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, motion made in second and all favor.
Uh.
Any opposed? Best of luck. Thank you. Thanks, Sharon. Thank you too for being here. Thanks, Sharon. Thank you too for being here. What?
Balls.
What were you saying? Elvis, that's. Elvis, so. Stateability, right? Didn't, okay, I know what you're saying, gotcha. All right, I remember seventeen, notice of award for this state, uh, State Highway sixty-two banner structure project.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, we issued the request for both the State Highway sixty-two banner structure projects on July ninth. Both were due August first. Unfortunately, none were received, so subsequent to that, uh, we did some outreach. We, we stopped to write contractors to see if they were interested in the project and, and perhaps get a quote. Um, August twenty-one, we did receive one quote from Triumph Construction uh, in the amount of a hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars even. And today, still the only quote we, uh, received. Uh, this project, as you all remember, was identified as a capital improvement project in our annual budget for twenty twenty-five. Estimated cost was, you know, ballpark at the time of putting the budget together, a hundred thousand. Uh, I think Eaker did theirs for a year, year or two ago for fifty or sixty thousand, I think it about. But, I don't, anyway, so today of that amount, uh, seventeen thousand, just north of seventeen, actually just shy of eighteen thousand dollars, is that engineering, uh, the banner structure, have some by the week before, we'll ask some additional engineering type expenditures for, uh, materials, civil review, materials testing, inspections and such from Buckhorn Engineering. So Triumph's quote is, is a pretty big one, it's well above the budget amount, but, uh, do feel that the general fund can accommodate the increase. And staff could feel comfortable moving forward, but, uh, all that said, Paul's in your court. Have to answer any questions if you are looking for some direction or action on this project.
Thanks, Harrison. Quoting our illustrious town manager, I don't want to be that guy, but how much of that extra work, because back that we didn't get any bids, and this company knows that this is out of out of what we believe was a reasonable price range.
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. Um, you know, it's not apples to apples, but sometimes like with projects like some of the studies that we've done say, I'm just picking on like the house needs assessment, such if you go in for our budget, you can see the amount that we budgeted for. Uh, that's what I would, which informs some of these, these bids and proposals that come in, sure, so.
Is there any mechanism for saying, uh, go back to, say, for a hundred twenty-five or something?
Always try to negotiate, sure. Uh, we would need to, you know, figure out, I mean, as part of our proposal, which wasn't in here, they're, they're pretty clear about the equipment materials based on, you know, the engineered document, you know, the plan set that we provided, which is engineered according to C dot specifications, so it is pretty stringent, right, so.
Can we budget prior to tariffs and price increases?
And the other thing is ones around timeline, C dot.
That's what I was just gonna say, is we've got to.
We headed from C dot timing, and and it helps our businesses learn in the country, they've been struggling, so why is this like investing in our?
Of course, Chris, I have, uh, Chris and I talked about this preview last week. Um, he, he mentioned he wasn't sure how we were gonna get banners up on these poles um, without a wood truck or something, and I am virtually certain that the Eaker, uh, project had something designed into it that made banners end up in the, just get from the ground. And did you check in to see whether ours is, is designed that way or?
Uh, it's not, uh, there's no, it doesn't contemplate anything like, like that, uh, but something that we can I talk with the folks at Buckhorn, and that's something that, as part of material submittals and like pre-construction, uh, meetings and such, we try to figure out.
Cause I, I thought we.
You do have a column in Eaker to figure out how they do it, because you were saying that that's how they do it there.
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking all along, is that since this whole idea came from how successfully they would safely do this, that somebody would have talked to them about their design and that, that in the first place, but now that we know that it's not part of ours, but we really want it, we should figure out how to add it, and hopefully it's not gonna be. How often are they changing cells?
Exactly.
How often per year do you have to change it out?
Pretty often. They, yeah, they have to be pretty, uh, change up very often. If I remember, I see that requires, uh, no more than fifteen days per banner.
Oh, wow. The reason I bring that up is I recall when I worked with S and P A, you know, plating, that their bucket truck, they were they were charging about a hundred fifty an hour for use of, you know, bucket truck for purposes of changing out lights in the town, which they were wanted to bill at that time, right? They weren't billing before under handshake agreement.
Whereas if you make it something harder, your companies can do it.
But, actually, so.
My, my pictures, go ahead.
I did ask Buckhorn to look at what was done in Eaker, uh, so that was kind of part of their scope. Um, of course, they had to meet the C dot standard specifications, plus our soils are a lot worse, so it was it's not the right way to say it, but over-engineered even more based on.
Um, I, my vision has always been we, that the banner part might have like a permanent smaller banner at the top that says welcome to Ridgway, and then below that will be where the banners change every couple weeks or something for new events.
Like downtown Golden.
Concert series, the, round it with, you know, whatever.
Player bands.
Yes.
Fire bands, I go.
That's what, that's what I have a vision, and I think that's kind of what Eakers is all about, so.
Yeah, they have like one banner with a lot, well, I mean, picture I've seen of one of their banners has like a lot going on with it. See, that's pretty specific about what's allowed and what's not on the banners, how long they can be up there. Uh, we have some draft application forms for respective banner owners to request, you know, have an input up and such, first. We're a long way still from that till we get the thing constructed, so better than where we're at now.
All right, any other questions on this or is there a motion? Well, move to issue notice of award for the S H sixty-two banner structure present to try in construction and let's see it, not to exceed one fifty-nine.
Oh, second.
What should we do in second, I don't favor?
Hi.
Be opposed? You very much. Fifteen days, huh? It's crazy.
And it's, it's something like that, it's been, it was surprisingly short.
Uh, that takes us to Pam and I know with the port, permanent consumption area where she was.
Okay, this came out of a conversation during last year's budget retreat. A question about creating an entertainment district on Clinton Street. So the Colorado liquor code, which is part of the Colorado whereby statute defines a entertainment district as an area that uses physical barriers to close the area to traffic and limit pedestrian access, but it also states that it must be in at least twenty thousand square feet of premises. And that would, uh, be from the, the premise line of the businesses themselves, and Clinton Street businesses right now do not total twenty thousand square feet. Uh, to create an entertainment district on Clinton Street would also require the town to close Clinton Street to be a boss. So I did look into another option, which is communal outdoor dining. That is used for food and alcohol beverage service by two or more liquor licensed premises, and we did, uh, uh, last year, Colorado Boy and the Chervino applied for one of those licenses, but they did not follow through with making that application, and I have since talked to the new owner of Colorado Boy, who said at that time he was not interested in pursuing this. But if the licensed facilities along the south side of Clinton Street did choose to do that, they could apply for a communal outdoor dining area, which would allow movement of food and alcoholic beverages within that area. They would have to apply to uh, have their modification of their licensed premises. They would have to pay a fee, they would joint, they have to prepare a security and control plan, which would have to be approved by the local licensing authority, which is the town council and state. And they would have to provide supervision and control of the communal dining area along with obtaining insurance. So that is the options that are, the, the communal dining is the only option that would be available.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thanks for doing all that research.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions on this thing?
Um, what's the, I, I'm doing a bit of research, so my vision was not necessarily an entertainment district. It was more of a designated outdoor refreshment area, so Dora versus an entertainment district.
Right, the, uh, the communal, the communal, the communal. You don't even have to have dining, it's just, you know, drinks in the zone.
Hmm, that's different than.
And that's different than an entertainment district.
I did not find that in the Colorado statutes.
No, no, okay, um. I just was looking at it, and that seemed more narrow. Uh, and if I would have found Dora is a narrowly goal designation for an alcohol consumption, whereas an entertainment district is a larger multifaceted area designed for wide range of attractions.
And so are those designated outdoor areas a thing in Colorado, or is it just like a general thing that is?
I believe, I've seen it in endeavor.
Yeah, it, it is a kind of.
It might be Denver County. Uh, it's, it's something that we can look at, but it it's not in the state statutes. Um, now Denver County could also have their own regulations regarding those types of facilities.
Yes, I, I just was thinking like, obviously, I think this, um, this, uh, communal outdoor dining area, I think that's a lovely idea. But I was hoping for more of a Dora versus entertainment zone, because it's, doesn't have to be twenty thousand.
Yeah, which feels like a bummer for small towns.
Yes.
Like, you know. Um, but on the other hand, if the businesses on Clinton Street don't want to do the communal dining, then that.
This was brought up last night, but or two months ago, the chamber meeting, which happened to be at Chloe's, um, because Halloween's been a month in one of those meetings, and they, they asked what the status was on this, and I said that would be a good time staff to look into that, so. I'm not for sure if that means she wants it, but that was a question from the chamber and from all the participants.
And I spoke of that last week about this as well, is very, very unfavorable, and I just.
But I think everybody's favorable, until it comes to managing it and being responsible, supervising, paying fees, all of the big words and the insurance, it's like, if we can find an easy way to navigate all of that, it's great fun for everybody, but I don't know. Let's just say of the three or four businesses I'm going through right now, I don't, anyone is gonna step up to take all that on.
Yeah.
Stay tuned.
Yeah.
Great.
But thanks again, Pam.
We all, thanks for doing our research. I suppose for more, we could just have to locate the Denver door and see, but again, I, I'm not sure it's spending more time on, businesses themselves.
Yeah, I think, I think we need some feedback on whatever you know, direction, that, yeah.
Okay, enough on that end. All right, I remember nineteen, got table, Greg Preston. So, funding company wanted subjects to start from twenty which is basically to make all fire restrictions to follow along with the county in a very cohesive job, so correct.
Yeah, so I guess technically we need to ratify what was done the other day, kind of stage one, and then nothing further has been done for taking all fire restrictions off the table, so that's one to consider.
Okay.
So I think it's, my point is it's two separate things.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to ratify the move to stage one restrictions.
Seven.
What should we do in second, I don't favor?
I.
Be opposed? Okay.
And then I further move that we rescind all fire restrictions that town originally.
Second.
All right, should be in second, yeah. Favor.
And I.
They opposed. Check, check.
It's not.
Uh, that takes us, you said there was something else before we get to the budget preparation versus this.
Now, those.
That's it. Uh, removing the strategic. Um, okay, so we are, I remember twenty-one, as well as the town managers. Updated schedule for preparation, the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget.
The only modification to this secreted on last month was the budget retreat date, Saturday, October fourth. Uh, that should be on your calendars. Anthony asked, so any questions about that, but they could have a budget process now with that. For staff meetings, and we're working on the draft budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Then on the manager's report, just a few things to highlight. Uh, we have updates on the Vierpukt Persian Restoration Project on the, on the webpage there, if you ever have interest or just give me a call, we'll be updating. Uh, Hansa sent me a link to this TED Talk that. Rust did, uh, pretty cool, I watched it, yeah, the link is there on the second page.
Ridgway, it's a shout-out.
Yeah. Okay, did you watch it?
I haven't, but I watched it. So. Yeah, unfamous now.
Yep.
Yeah, I was gonna say that. Congratulations.
Uh, the Duncan Iron High replacement project is ongoing, obviously, there's a lot going on with that in phases as we work our way down the hill and down Amelia Street towards, uh, towards Moth, that we had the tie-in that took place last week, and it was successful until we discovered a, talking about it all day, but I guess it was two weeks ago now. When it was, uh, but the main, had a bust in it, and huge shout-out to everyone involved in, um, trying to make that as least impactful as possible. It's a long day, day, but I mean, everyone in public works, um, the crew with Ridgway Valley, that was on hand to help that day, and, uh, everyone who supports us, so. It's great, much appreciated. There's gonna be more tie-ins as those segments come online, so we'll continue doing our best to put that reach out and let folks know when what are the water shut-offs are gonna happen, uh, late at night kind of thing, we'll be knocking on doors, but we understand it's a it's a big impact, but it's an important project, so we appreciate everyone's patience. Um, the recreational trail easement and, uh, we we're giving the address, and Marion Overlook has been constructed, we have public trail signs going in here in the next couple of days, I think those signs get in on Friday. Uh, but shout-out to the school for continuing that path and making a clear delineation at that site. And, uh, this was covered a little bit earlier, but Angie provided a pretty good timeline uh, based on the Energy Code cohort and the package for adoption that includes the whole twenty twenty-four International Building Code, International Residential Code. That also really includes our focus, that the International Energy Efficiency Code, Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code, Model Low Energy and Carbon Code. That whole package, and some of the amendments that the Code cohort has been contemplating and is recommending. Uh, we'll be going through this outreach process, starting from October second. This, uh, building energy codes one-on-one, see some other opportunities.
So this is one that wants to make everything all electric required for residential homes.
No, that's completely separate, so it ends with, uh, you know, a slated second reading at the town council level in December, but to answer your question, Josie, no, that is not part of this, that's an entirely separate amendment that can be considered. At some point twenty twenty-six, based on the amount of outreach. Uh, and the expected contention that could come with that, right, so that's being, you know, completely separate.
And that's been systematically.
That's been systematically budgeted for in that impact accelerator grant proposal. Wreck it with actual quantities and dollars associated with the outreach and the architectural stakeholder workshops, and so. The idea, I think, all mentioned it when she read through that L O I before, was concept is that no. As an example, uninformed prior to that.
And then, uh, a couple of things, uh, Shane can talk about this more if he wants. The, uh, sobriety checkpoint several weeks ago, seven hundred eighty-five drivers were contacted. Six sets of road sides administered and one arrest for DUI. Uh, to that goal, and so shout out to Shane and his crew, of course, and Colorado State Patrol for organizing it.
The DUI.
I had a couple of things that I wanted to encourage everybody to, um, attend the, um. Back to government's com- com- workshop that C M L is doing at the tech room on November twentieth.
Do we have a timeline for that?
I went to the website and it still wasn't a time, I went, what are you saying?
I don't know, it's time, you know, reminder, uh, I could check on time.
That would be helpful.
Well, but us to register is forty-five dollars, Michelle's been registered. And, and I can, and I don't think anybody has the ability to register on C M L website. Maybe you do, John, I don't know. I'll, uh.
You have to make it a channel.
Okay, you all registered if you had interest.
I'll check on time, but.
Yeah, I see your, there is no time.
That was, I remember that big thing last time when it got canceled.
And then, uh, we're, uh, closer to now, September twenty-ninth, the, the district meeting up in Gray is always. Good time, so join Preston and I for that if you can. The mountain lodge thing, that, um, sounds like it's still being discussed at staff level, but there's an article in the paper to- today, tonight about. While they're going forward, they think they can just do it.
It was interesting to read, probably fifteen percent occupancy, that is concerning if that's the case, you know?
But if you're seventy percent occupied in the summer, was, what that article, very conveniently, when I just skimmed it. It wasn't the order's fault, but the, what was never discussed is, I'm not really sure that Palomino. And Chupita are filling for the mountain lodge and their price point, they already pulled, you can't make a reservation for next summer, it's there, it's gone, it's not possible. Um, so.
At Mountain Lodge?
At Mountain Lodge, you cannot, you cannot reserve a room for next summer. Um, and so, you know, that, that leaves us hoping we can grab lodging from Gray. So like, I appreciate their need to make, but yeah.
I just have a comment, I actually talked to Mountain Lodge today, they're not booking any rooms, it's too early. But we have already got our list set for conferences.
Interesting, well, then I will call in and see if I can arrange a room block. Um, but yeah, it's, it's just, it is, it's stressful, because people, once summer's over, people start thinking about the next year. Uh, Preston, did you ever hear anything about the meeting tomorrow in Natarida?
No.
They were gonna have.
No, I have no, I have zero information, I don't know if you hear, but, uh, I had asked the. Synergy for the article and yeah, I don't remember what she said actually, but she was gonna bore me some information, I hadn't seen anything about it. But that kind of just adds to this. Very amusing nature of this whole, whole deal and the fact that we've been kind of, you know, left out.
Getified, potentially?
But I just want to assure everybody that, yeah, we'd have, we had a conversation with the mountain lodge group that's in there in the report. And we're regurgitating that's in there, but, uh, we, the ball is in their court to provide us with some information, they have provided us with some information. It wasn't exactly what we expected, we need to evaluate that, pose more questions so that we can figure out. Process they need to go to, all the impacts associated with that, potential change in use, all that stuff. More, more needs to be done.
Yeah. Yeah, and like I, I'm with you, Josie, like the winner numbers are really concerning, but when we talk about trying to support Clinton Street.
Oh, yeah, some of it, yeah, and not much, sorry. Part from where the other one, I said, just more information is definitely. All of us.
I'll check, I'm gonna check again if we, we ended up getting a time and place verified, but we asked if there was a remote option to question that, and we were told no.
If there was a lot.
If there was a remote option, that they were gonna cut us online, um, but, uh, last time we checked, there was not. So I can get you that info tomorrow.
Actually, I think that, that tracks with what I remember you mentioning about that option, but I just don't remember the time.
Yes, or specific, I know Natarida, but I don't know where.
Well, I would just start with the occupancy numbers are not unused for.
No.
For various.
Yeah.
Maybe not against members first.
Well, that goes, I mean, that's something we're gonna have to talk about with budgeting and when we talked about our lodging numbers, when that came up. On the economic development piece, um, and whether we need to revisit paying for short-term rental licensing. Not so much for the enforcement, that would be nice, but to actually get occupancy numbers to know where we stand. Um, and that's part of supporting those businesses and understanding what beds we have. Um, because I think one of the results of this is we're gonna get pushed for more short-term licenses. And we're gonna need to understand all of the pieces and without data, we won't, and I know. Well, Polly and I last budget season spoke up pretty firmly about this and we decided as a council that that wasn't where we needed to go. But with that economic development report we had, um, with this acute situation. I, I think we need a better understanding of beds and. Does Chupita get a boost? Does Palomino get a boost? Or do people look at their prices and say, it's a different price point than Mountain Lodge and I'll go elsewhere?
That was part of, in one of the charges that we had.
Was, I know.
For the next couple of years, that's something that you're just gonna take on in terms of business relationships and try to get accurate occupancy rate.
But if we don't have short-term rental numbers, it's not real.
Another today too, that I'm sure, a, a couple of, um, brief anecdotes on the trail. One, the closest observer, they use it a lot, so if you haven't discovered it, icicles in particular, the teachers. Adam takes that shortcut now.
I can't do that.
Yeah, it's a lot of people using. Second act is that had numerous people come up to me and asked if it's done yet, so that they think, you know, it's not finished besides the sign going in. Because of the sharp drop part there, thinking that there's more to come on. Where's there a sharp drop on? The, um, the cut, the, the lower level cut into the hillside where there's potential erosion problem. Might surface, might be worth putting some gravel along the edge of it, along the, uh, the east ledge, you know?
Yeah.
Gotcha, I see that. Well, I'm glad to hear, we heard anything from Mr. Steen?
About that too.
No, uh, but our, uh, our, I don't know what they call it, our case hearings coming out next week and then they'll set the. Valuation hearing with the jury, though.
It's, it's the required.
I don't know. Uh, the last couple of things, uh, remember the regular October meeting is not on October eighth, it's on October first. Budget retreat is a few days later on Saturday, October fourth, bear in mind, October first is the next town council meeting, which will be. That's strange. So it's right around the corner.
So thank you guys for being flexible, that'll make the mountain towns life a lot easier.
A lot less stressful.
I don't.
Also exciting about. Yeah. New, new executive assistant.
Yes.
Yeah, these first days tomorrow.
I, I could blow in things from her, with her work with West Region.
She's, she's a go-getter, she's real, I've known her for a long time, she's, I'm excited for her on board. Um, anything else? I've heard everybody say we love to joke this one, this one.
I don't, I type of one right.
High drive is outstanding, so.
If you've never heard that before.
It's about him. Just teasing, I think you're wonderful.
Yeah, it's getting cold, I saw an attorney put his, uh, hands in his own pocket last week, so.
Always good to get to the end of the meeting with a little laugh, right? I bet Terry has a, maybe report, although we did see. Didn't, didn't take care of it, that's good, everybody else have a, we appreciate it.
Eight prowler's beard fifteen pieces later.
Fantastic. Although Alex shuffling back and forth to the boy.
You're here for Alex.
Yeah.
All right, unless there's anything else for the good of the order, I will say we are adjourned.
See y'all.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.